Aloha, mai kahau. Tonight is September 10th. It is 6:01 PM and I am calling this session of the Kahaloo Neighborhood Board to order. First up on our agenda, we have Emergency Responder Monthly Reports Honolulu Fire Department.
Hello, Captain Sueta, Kahaloo Fire Station. For fires, we had two nuisance fires and one activated alarm. Emergencies, we had thirty-six medical emergencies, two motor vehicle crashes, crashes or collisions, and one ocean rescue. The fire safety tip is charge into fire safety. This year, the National Fire Protection Association Fire Prevention Week campaign works to educate everyone about using these batteries safely. Lithium-ion batteries store a lot of energy in a small place. These batteries can overheat, start a fire, or explode if overcharged or damaged. By learning how to buy, charge, and recycle these batteries safely, you can help prevent a fire in your home. Four quick bullet points. Buy only listed products when buying products that use lithium-ion battery. Look for a safety certification mark such as UL, ETL, or CSA. This means it meets important safety standards. Two, charge devices safely. Always use the cords that came with the product to charge. Follow the instructions from the manufacturer. Buy new chargers from the manufacturer or one that the manufacturer has approved. Charge your device on a hard surface. Don't overcharge your device. Unplug it or remove the battery when it's fully charged. Three, recycle batteries responsibly. Don't throw lithium-ion batteries in the trash or regular recycling bins because they could start a fire. Recycle your device or battery at a safe battery recycling location. Visit calltorecyclie.org to find a recycling spot near you. And number four, the HFD is hosting a Fire Prevention Family Day event on October 4th, 2025 at the Honolulu Zoo from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Bring the family to participate in activities and meet our fire and life safety partners. That's it for the announcements. Any questions?
Mahalo, Captain Suera. Kalamai, could you just tell us again where we can find the appropriate place to use like batteries?
Oh, yes. Sorry, it's um. Call the number two recycle.org. So C-A-L-L-two-R-E-C-Y-C-L-E.org.
Mahalo. Board members, anything for HFD? Uncle Dan, go ahead. Microphone, Uncle Dan. Right in front of you.
Have special technique putting out lithium batteries. In other words, all these people have lithium batteries, me too, on the side of the house. And our house is now, because of the zoning, you know, five feet away. So if my neighbor's house catches fire, catches onto my lithium battery, what do you guys do? You just let them burn?
Uh, so the question was for lithium batteries, do we have a special technique that we use to put it out? So, so actually what we do is it'll be a case-by-case basis dependent. If there's a lot of water, we definitely, copious amounts of water is probably our go-to method. I can follow up if there's other methods. I know they're looking at like blankets and stuff for cars and the lithium, the like scooters and stuff like that as well. But depending on the type of battery, it'll vary on each situation.
Mahalo. Board members in person, anything else for HFD? Board members online, anything for HFD? Community in person? Community online? Mahalo, Captain Suena.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on in our agenda to Honolulu Police Department. Aloha, HPD. No, right here, HPD. Hi. You're on mute, Kalamai. You can go ahead.
Sorry, Sergeant with District 4. So in August of 2025, we had one motor vehicle theft compared to one the previous month. We had one burglary compared to two the previous month. We had seven thefts compared to seven the previous month. We had zero UEMVs compared to zero the previous month. And we had zero robbery cases compared to two the previous month. And for the theft cases, that incorporates or includes pickpocketing, purse snatching, shoplifting, theft of vehicle accessories, theft of bicycle, theft from buildings, theft of coin machines, and other thefts.
Mahalo. Board members in person, anything for HPD? Board members online? Oh, Kalamai, Uncle John, something for HPD?
Sergeant, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just want to know what kind of strategy you have dealing with uh those who are riding mopeds and motorcycles and so on and popping wheelies on the highway. You know, I've worked at Key Project for well over forty years before retiring. And I came in here the other night, Saturday night, and the whole hall was set up for a celebration of life for one of the kids who lived down the road here. Passed away. And um and after the party, Waheia Road basically got shut down by kids popping wheelies, burning rubber on Waheia Road. And I don't know if you guys were able to respond or not. I know Key Project is trying to respond to that with policy changes of their own. But wondered what, what HPD is doing about that situation. What would you recommend?
Thank you. So it's kind of a tricky situation because we would like to enforce the laws and stop them, but a lot of times these kids, they're wearing helmets, they're wearing face masks. For a reason, it's to conceal their identity. And when we try to pull them over by lighting up our lights, a lot of times they just take off. They'll ride against traffic, they'll ride on the sidewalk, you know, through the parks or whatnot. And so we have to kind of weigh the dangers of them crashing, killing themselves versus us giving them a citation. So what we've, we've done is we've kind of created a different strategy where we use unmarked cars a lot of times. And we will try and follow them until they stop on their own. And then we'll approach them and we'll issue whatever necessary citations are. If they're juveniles, we immediately contact their parents and let them know what their behavior was like. And hopefully, hopefully the, the parents and the education can start in the home and, and whatever consequences taking away the bike or, you know, whatever, whatever they see fit will help solve that problem. But it is dangerous for us to go and try and stop them and they take off and and uh, and crash and die and then we, you know, we have to deal with that. So it's something we have to weigh.
They all have to go to the watering hole to get gas. That might be a place to start this thing operation. I've seen twenty, twenty kids on mopeds right, right here at the gas station.
That's true. Yeah.
You know, I know it looks like fun. It must be fun for them. It's been going on since the seventies in the last century. But it's gotten incredibly dangerous now. Really high speed, electric bikes and so on. And they're weaving in and out of traffic in ways that are jeopardizing oncoming lanes and so on. Really, really dangerous. So, but thanks for your response.
Oh, thank you.
Uncle Dan.
Just a quick question about vacancies in Kanioei. How are we doing with filling vacancies? I know the guys in your, in our age group are retiring very, you know, very often. And so there's a lot of vacant police positions. Are you able to pick up anybody from the federal government who's leaving? How's it going?
Uh, I'm not aware of anybody that has left the federal government to come to our department. I'm sorry, I didn't prepare for that particular question. So I don't have any stats to, to share with you as far as what our staffing looks like in Kanioei right now. Whether we're have vacant staff positions or whether or not we are full. But I can check on that. At the next meeting, we can bring that to you.
Mahalo. Board members in person, anything else for HPD? Kyone, online?
Yeah, how's it? I just wanted to find, follow up on, there's that altercation about a week ago with those two groups of kids in the parking lot at the Winred Mall. Did, did anything come up with that? Like for, were any of them arrested? Did anything happen? The only reason why I ask is because I was actually there that day, at that time, with my daughter, my four-year-old daughter. She goes to gymnastics there. And I actively had to duck from being shot at by a slingshot. And you know, like as a, just a concerned community member, like, like what, what would I, what am I supposed to do if my kid got hit? Like, and like, you know, if, if my daughter got hit, I would have lost it, to be honest with you, as a father. You know, I, I understand I'm a, I'm a community member and like a representative of my community and shouldn't, but you know, in that moment, like I was actually worried. And then when I was driving out of the parking lot, one of the kids who had the slingshot actually jumped on in front of my car and used my car as a shield to shoot at those other kids. So like, what, what, what can we tell the community if stuff like that happens? Because like, I know a lot of people are not stoked about that. And I've been asked that question. That's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, I mean, anytime that there's any type of disturbance like that, we encourage the public obviously not to stand there or, I'm not saying that you were, but a lot of people, they'll take all their phones and they'll try to get the video, right? They'll try to get it for my Kailua or whatever the case may be. And that's human nature, but we strongly encourage people, if you see something going down, like a big fight or whatever, get out of the area and call 911 and let us come and handle it. As far as that particular incident that you're referring to, there were cases made. There was a robbery case made as well as some assault cases that were made. The cases were assigned to our Criminal Investigation Division, the robbery detail, and there were those cases to see if they can end up with an arrest. We've identified, I think, I think so far we have about maybe what, sixteen of the people involved, juveniles and adults, were from the Kalihi area that came down to Winred Mall. And then the other group that was involved, we believe were Kanioei boys. So we're not sure exactly what the problem was, but yeah, we understand that it's, it's, it's a pretty crappy situation to be at the mall with your family and something breaks out like that in front of you.
So just one more question. Another parent asked me this. So when I told them this story that I, that I had experienced, they asked me, well, you should ask the police officers in your, in your meeting, what would happen if, for example, a community member got close enough to where they felt threatened and they were actually about to be attacked? What should they do then? Just run away? Are they safe to defend themselves? Like what, what would be the course of action, the legal course of action that they could take in that sense? Because they're being threatened with danger and bodily harm.
So the way the law is written, you, if you have an ability to leave the area or to flee, then you, you know, you need to do that. If you're gonna put yourself in a position where you're gonna end up using force, like if you hang around an area or you start getting involved and you end up using force, then that's gonna be judged by the courts. That's not for us to decide. But I can tell you that anytime that somebody uses physical force on another person, we're gonna make a case, whatever. It's gonna depend on what the, the injuries are, whether there was weapons, all kinds of things that are involved. But we will make the cases, not necessarily arrest. And then those cases will be brought to the prosecutor's office and they will determine whether or not they're gonna go through with charges. And if they do, then obviously the ultimate result is at the court level. So to answer your question, best situation or best thing for you to do if something like that breaks out is to get out of the area, get your family, get to a safe area, call 911, and let us come and handle it.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Yeah.
But okay.
I'm sorry that you, I'm sorry that you had to experience that. You know, I go to the mall with my family as well. It's, it's a crappy situation. Unfortunately, a lot of those things come up out of the blue. Like we don't have intel prior to that to get us there. It's all after the facts.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mahalo. Any other board members online have anything for HPD? Seeing none. Community in person, anything for HPD? Community online, anything for HPD? Moving on. Mahalo, HPD. Oh, he just gave the report. Do you have anything else? Yeah. You have something different? Okay. Mahalo for being with us. All right, moving on in our agenda, filling of vacancies on the board. We have two openings in Sub District 6, and we actually have someone here to fill Sub District 6. Could you come to the mic and just introduce yourself to us, please? Thank you so much.
Aloha. My name is Kuupoli Fernandez. I live right behind Times Shopping Center on Huiiva Street. I've been a member or I've lived in the area since 1983, raised my children in this area. I was a teacher for twenty-seven years at Kamaki Middle, teaching health. I'm on the board for my association, the Executive Board for Tropicana Village Haiku. And I'm also lead the Buildings and Grounds Committee for our association.
Mahalo. Kuupoli's address has been verified, so I'm looking for a motion, board members. I need a second. Second from Uncle John. All right, I'll just take um, do I need a roll call vote or? Um, any, I guess, any opposition? Board members online, any opposition? Seeing none? Welcome to the board, Kuupoli. If you'd like to take a seat at the table with us, you're welcome to. If you want to wait until next meeting, you can do that. Okay. Thank you so much. All right, moving on in our, oh, also, we have one more vacancy in Sub District 6. So if anybody that lives back behind Times supermarket wants to join us, please come down next meeting or later this meeting. That's fine, too. Moving on to election of officers, we were discussing whether or not we would have a second vice chair. Nobody put their name in the hat. Is there anybody that wants to put their name in the hat for a second vice chair? They would be me when me is not here. So you're gonna time everybody and keep everybody on task and support Chair Spencer in creating agendas and community correspondence. Okay. Oh, you, you want to jump in, Uncle Dan? You want to be the second vice chair? No? Okay. We definitely had one. Kyone used to be one. But anyhow, okay. So if nobody wants to do it, we'll circle back to that next meeting. Moving on to city-state federal reports. I'm gonna go out of order here since we have one of our representatives who needs to move on to another part of the district shortly here soon. So we're gonna go down to letter F, Senator Brenton O'Wah.
Thanks for putting me up early. Had a nine-hour flight from Atlanta, then I had to deal with drama in the news. So I'll start with that. We didn't use no public funds, by the way. Was buying those rumors. Um, yeah, we just got back from Washington. We met with a bunch of people up there within the administration, the White House, talking about Kamaha school situation. There was a lot of support. And, and I want to make that clear because, but yeah, so we got back. We talked to a bunch of people, US Department of Education, Senator up there who's a chair on Indian Affairs, which she was the one who got the president's administration to carve out points from the DEI policy. White House, Tulsi, Republican National Headquarters, they know the same lawyers that is representing this guy who is looking at challenging Kamaha schools admission policy. We went up there just to try to see if we can get leverage. I guess what people thought was that we went up there to knock on a door and come right back. But we talked to a lot of influential people. And so we hope that with their influence, we can get this guy to call it off and don't have to get to the legal part of it. Other than that, I'll take questions if you guys have it. But other than that, the Genki Ball project, there was a headline out of the Civil Beat, and that one, I'm so busy and everyone gets to chew out those guys. But, but you know, if you read the Civil Beat article, all of what's said is true, but they leave out information that is very relevant information. And if, how many people is even know what I'm talking about, the Civil Beat article? Okay, so I'm talking to people in the know. We would love if HPU would come out and test Kahaloo for our project. And the reason is because the testing is really expensive. And so the Surf Riders is doing it for our area. What, what these, what HPU did, and this is not a knock, this is just telling the facts of what they did. They did a study in Kailua and, and they dropped two deployments, one hundred Genki balls each. The A'loai has got two hundred thousand plus already. And we've, we've done, what, we're going on almost two months now. We've got more than, we've got at least fifteen hundred in there. So it's kind of comparing apples and oranges, that, that article. So we just wanted to make sure if the community saw it and were like, hey, Genki balls don't work, that eh, look a little bit deeper to what was not said in the article. And yeah, we, we already was on the phone with HPU and wanted them to come on and help us. But those are the two updates I just wanted to get out, and we're really here for questions.
Uncle Dan, go ahead.
So the city budget has a rehab loan fund where people can come in and borrow money to work on their homes. I wondered if you would be willing to partner some legislation with a councilperson to create a fund so people could come in to rehab their sewage arrangements for their homes, septic tanks and, you know, broken plumbing, because it's really expensive for a family to correct that. And I'm, I can't thank you enough for bringing it to our attention. And I think there's money in the rehab loan fund. It's very small, but I, but it exists. So it doesn't require, you know, an act of Congress to get it. It's already there. I would just want you to try to see if you could get it available for people to rehab their septic tanks.
Okay, offline, let's make sure we get that in an email so we can have that.
Send your note? Okay, thanks.
And on that, since, since we're going to the cesspool part, we didn't announce it yet, but the the Baptist church right over there behind Hygienic, they've got a cesspool. They have a septic and a cesspool, but, but they've agreed, this camera is the wrong way. Should I be?
No.
They've agreed to treat their cesspool. So we're gonna, we're gonna try that with the, with the EM, the microbes, not the dirt in the balls, just the actual EM mixture down the, down the toilet drain.
Uncle Ron?
So, um, is there any possibility like the way they dredged the A'loai Canal several years back? Is it possible to like Kahaloo Pond and the mouth of the river?
I mean, that, that's a conversation that really should start, should start here. Because it's, that's not like a silver bullet. Like there's effects that comes with dredging, all of the sediment that will come up. So that's something, if the community wants that, it has to come from the community. Because if I were to say, hey, let's go dredge. Something, I don't know, I was gonna say, somebody might shoot me, but that bad day for saying that.
So Uncle Ron, we've also discussed that as a board in previous years about instead of dredging is like a last resort, because our waste will still have to go to the west side. So they'll just be adopting our waste. So we'll try other mitigation circumstances before we get to that point. If, if they're helpful, then great. Uncle John?
How much, how, how much effort has been put into putting Genki balls into septic systems, individual septic systems? Who has done that? Has the Department of Health looked at that?
Here, here, our, our state has not looked at. They're interested, but we haven't. According to, and really, it should be Corey, guys.
I think it should be who?
Corey with EM Hawaii. I think they came and addressed you folks, but he would be the, the one with all that data. When we talk to him, they do it, according to them, they do it in Japan.
Have you reached out to the State Department of Health about this?
No, well, we did, we did. We invited them to be a part of, and I don't want to slam them, this is recorded, but we invited them, we, 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 I was, you know, on the phone with the director and we wanted anybody to come out just to be a part of it. You know, they didn't have to do no work, but they didn't come. So.
But I know, I know HPU has done quite a bit of studying up and down the coast over the years. I don't know about this particular situation that you described, but they have been doing a lot of, a lot of research up and down the coast. And so maybe it'd be good to get them to come and talk about what they're doing and, you know, what they've done over the years. Wayne German's wife was there, one of your, one of the Genki Ball things that, I think she's doing research for.
Martha.
Yeah, Martha.
Martha. Martha goes to every drop.
Is that for HPU or is that for?
No, that's for Bewater.
For, for.
Martha's doing Surf Rider, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I think it'd be great for us here. I mean, one, one thing is absolutely clear to me is that by doing what you're doing, more people are paying attention to the danger situation. It's a very dangerous situation. Kids, kids paddling in the Kailua, worry about them all the time. They're gonna get sick. Somebody, yeah, it, it is a dangerous situation. So educating the kids and therefore their families is really important about this issue. This is treating the symptom, but not necessarily the source.
Yeah.
And that's what we gotta get. So anyway.
No, we gotta try again. This is not the hammer taking out the problem. This is the first step on a ladder.
Any other board members in person for Senator O'Wah? Board members online, Uncle Ken, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, two things. One, this Genki Ball is a work in progress. Okay, you're not gonna get any conclusive results for one or two years. People speaking up now are getting the floor and making themselves known, representing an argument. And like John said, what they're doing is bringing the issue to the forefront. And that's a good thing. Discussion is always a good thing. Now, unfortunately, this presentation was interrupted by the same thing that interrupted our APOCAC meeting while back. This is something going through government meetings. I don't know if they're all this format or some are Zoom or whatever, but the exact same thing is happening and they are working on it. But it, it has to be a little bit more done and attention gotten. And, and we do have a, a police officer here who was witness to it. If there should be any sort of an issue, he could represent to the people that need to know that this did indeed happen. And those are the two main issues I wanted to address. This has happened before. Meet, this is my second meeting where this happened. And it's just, what do you call it? Well, you know what it's called. I don't have to say anything. Too much attention's already been paid to it. Anyway, Genki Balls is a work in progress. Let's progress. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Uncle Ken. Board members online? Any other board members online for Senator O'Wah? Seeing none. Community in person, anything for Senator O'Wah? Community online, anything for Senator O'Wah? Okay, so I'm gonna take this phone number for Senator O'Wah. Please identify yourself with your first and last name and your district. Go ahead, eight zero eight with the last phone digits as four zero. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Yeah, Chair, this is Donald Sakamora, President of Citizens for Fair AD Right. I deal with public transportation. I also sit on the Waho Metropolitan Planning Organization. And what your board members just said, it does happen a lot. So, Senator, we need to do something about this. It's, it's a tragedy when we have interruptions. I just want to comment on that. Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Donald. So nothing for Senator O'Wah? Uncle Donald, just a comment on the interruption. Nothing for Senator O'Wah? Okay, thanks, Uncle Donald. Any other community members online for Senator O'Wah? Seeing none. Mahalo, Senator.
Thank you.
All right, circling back to the top of our agenda, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, Warren Mami Zuka, Department of Facility Maintenance.
Aloha, good evening, everyone. My name is Warren Mami Zuka. I am the mayor's rep and also the deputy director for the Department of Facility Maintenance. Before I begin with the report, last month's report, I just wanted to ask Jeff if he could put in a chat the link to the mayor's newsletter. Some interesting stories there. Just a couple of highlights. The city honors O'Wah's Purple Heart recipients during a ceremony at Honolulu Halei. Also, heart breaks ground on new guideways and rail stations across the third segment of the rail project from Kalihi to Kaka'aku. So moving on to a response to last month's issues. First issue is overgrowth safety hazard. Member Arthur Machado Jr. expressed concern about overgrowth from 7-Eleven to St. John's, noting bus drivers must drive in the middle of the road due to overhanging vegetation, creating a safety hazard during storms. So DFM, they've been working with the Department of Planning and permitting to you know, they, they went out August 22nd actually to inspect the area of the encroachment and overgrowth along Kamaha Highway from Lulani Street to Okano, Okano Road and Huimano Road. DFM is actually awaiting from the DPP to make their determination as to a budding private property maintenance responsibility. DFM will then schedule maintenance of the city responsible areas when resources are available. And then for item number two, jurisdiction question from member Kyoni Machado questioned jurisdiction over the hillside across of the Heia State Park where homeless individuals were staying, noting his father previously maintained that area when working at the Rose Division at King School's base yard. And the response from DFM is the city parcel TMK number four- And the response from DFM is the city parcel TMK number four dash six, that's zero one six, uh, three two two, uh, three two. That is across from Heia State Park is owned by, owned by and under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation. So we should be getting something for the October meeting, uh, response from the Department of Parks and Rec. And then the last item, uh, vendor traffic congestion. Vice Chair Mathainai uh, raised concerns about the food truck vendors near the roundabout creating, uh, dangerous traffic congestion and suggested relocating them to Kahaloo Regional Park. However, it is most likely requires a permit. So can city and DOT assist with that? If so, please provide that, uh, what permits are required and the steps. And the DPP, uh, response was the food truck vendors located at four seven dash five two eight Kamamea Highway occupies a property zone B one, Neighborhood Business District, which allows use for food truck vendors. And then the Kahaloo Regional Park property is zone P one Preservation District, which would require a zoning change by the city council as well as approval by neighborhood board. And that's all the responses I had for tonight and I will be available for any questions.
Okay, quick question just to that note. How many food trucks are allowed to be in that small area? It's zone B one, but what is the limit?
We'll have to get back with you next month.
Thank you.
I wish I knew the answer, but you know, that's something that DPP would be able to.
Okay. Mahalo. Uncle John, go ahead.
You got an hour? So a number of things, I'll work my way backwards. Um, the idea of food trucks, we've talked about that. I agree, I absolutely agree with Jesse. It's a terrible place for food trucks right now. There's just too much going on. On the other hand, the area that the kids have turned into.
John, can you go closer? Cause it's kind of hard to hear you.
The area that they, can you hear me? The area that the kids turned into a mud bog in between Kahakili and Okano Road. We've talked about the idea of creating, um, a vending place that's off of Kahakili, accessible from Okano Road. There's a traffic light there and so on. So would you like to explore that? It's kind of divided between state DOT and, um, and city on Okano Road. Um, that's, that's one, one thing. The other thing with the roundabout is that, it's DTS comes in from Kamamea Highway, right, Transportation? And DOT is Kahakili and, and on through. And we need to precipitate a conversation between the state and the county, um, Department of Transportation or Transportation folks to decide who's gonna take care of weed eating and all of that around the roundabout. It should, should probably be the state. The other thing I'd like to throw in there is that there was a time when the state, um, when Kamamea Highway from Hygienic to Haiku was a state highway because it was kind of a major thoroughfare. Ken Navasor knows a lot of the background history. I'd like to suggest that we relook at that, um, putting that back to the state because it is a pretty heavily used highway. And there are so many state facilities along the way. King School, four hundred acres of Pako Evi by the Long Bridge, Heia Kea, uh, Pier, Heia State Park, I mean, you name it. There's a lot of reasons for the state to be taking a look at, at managing that highway. And then going back to where you started with, um, vegetation, not just from Lulani coming back this way, but from Lulani going the other way as well as you get to where you folks were living before, um, uh, heading towards Heia Kea. I think what's needed is collaboration, and we've brought this up in previous board meetings, but collaboration between DFM maybe, um, um, and the state. The state has great articulated more with a side articulated arm, right? And it, and with Guinea grass growing the way it does, that almost needs to be a regular occurrence. And if it's really regular and everybody knows when it's gonna happen and can stay away from the highway, that would be really helpful. Share the machines because I'm sure they're expensive. But anyway, those are my quick comments.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Mahalo, Uncle John. Any other board members in person for mayor's rep? Board members online for mayor's rep? Community in person for mayor's rep? Community online. Uncle Donald, and then I'm gonna, um, is that you, Marie? Uncle Donald and then Marie.
Thank you.
Uncle Donald.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Donald Sakamora again, uh, for the mayor's representative. There was a, um, back on the phone lines and computers at Oahu Transit Service on September 3rd last week, uh, everything was down. People were trying to call handyman, uh, phone lines and they were busy from nine thirty to nine o'clock in the evening. And this is the clear violation of Title II of the AD with Civil Rights Justice Department. I filed a complaint in twenty nineteen for the phone lines against the city and Oahu Transit because they weren't answering their phones on time. It's a long period of times. It finally got resolved in, uh, uh, early part of, uh, January or February of, uh, twenty twenty-two. And so they have at least three, two more years for a five-year plan to fix the problem. But my concern was when they got the press release, the press release from Department of Transportation wasn't released to two forty PM that afternoon only via email. Not, everybody has the email. Uh, I got it because I'm on the mailing list, but I had people calling me since I have a key for public transportation for bus handyman. And handyman writers are asking where they can call. So I gave them the number. But, uh, when they called, nobody was manning the phone. You leave a name and phone number and reason why, and they check it later on. That's, 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 there should be more emphasis in having somebody man that phone so they can uh, call their reservation to be passed on to Oahu Transit because it was chaotic. But I just want to express that to the mayor's representative. Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Donald. Marie?
Okay, thank you. Um, this is a question about, uh, how the websites are doing, being, um, renovated and updated and what have you. I just spent about forty-five minutes with, uh, somebody else trying to enter something and, uh, it was impossible. So, you know, this is particularly with the DEM site, uh, trying to schedule something that didn't require them and, uh, but we could not register at all. So it's kind of like a request for an update on how things are going.
As far as the Department of Emergency Management?
Uh, well, that was the only one I was involved in, yes, but it's a city and county, uh, site. Trying to, trying to work the website. And I know it's been, uh, for months now, it's been, uh, talked about, uh, in renovations and updating and what have you. So I'm asking, how are things going? Because it didn't go very well five minutes ago.
You know, I, uh, I'm not familiar with, uh, anything with, uh, uh, IT. I think that's something that we'll have to get back with you next month.
Thank you.
I, I, I think each individual department, uh, we do have like a public information officer or someone with IT as well. And, uh, so they normally manage their own website, so.
Mahalo, Marie. Um, to that note, do you have any updates on DPP's transfer to their new system by chance? I know that was a slow transition, but, um, when they're expected to be fully rolled over? Or you could just take it back and maybe ask them when they're anticipated.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I speak with a lot of the guys from, uh, Department of Planning and permitting because, you know, uh, DFM, we do have to submit for building permits as well. So, you know, I've been waiting for a couple of permits, uh, for a number of months, but, uh, I, I think there, the transition, uh, there's a lot to learn, uh, and they're trying to still work out some kinks. But, uh, hopefully I can come back next month with something more solid, yeah.
Mahalo, Uncle Ken, go ahead, and then Uncle John.
Yes, the, you, you were here for the rude, uh, in interruption, uh, with the porn and everything?
Yeah, yeah, I was here.
Okay, uh, that's IT.
That would be IT, yes.
Yeah. And, and so if they can report back having contacted, um, our board is nonpartisan. Uh, APO CAC is not, is nonpartisan, but APO itself has input from legislative leadership, which is also partisan. Uh, it should be a nonpartisan issue that you need, uh, your IT needs to work with the state in order to, uh, deal with this issue because it's getting entirely out of control. And, uh, the kind, um,
You're right, Uncle Ken. It is, it is totally out of control. Mahalo.
We get thousands of hits every day, daily. So our IT personnel, they're, they're doing their best to prevent, you know, uh, things that happened just a little while ago.
Can we get a report back next meeting on what's happening with that? Thank you. Because that's all that's happening at APO CAC at this time.
Mahalo, Uncle Ken. Uncle John?
So one, one more question. Back in the day, I think it was DFM that would handle, um, clearing and so on in the back of, uh, what has become Kahaloo Regional Park. It's obviously way beyond what parks can handle. It's gotten so overgrown back there. And, um, so I'm just wondering, how can DFM help? Is, is, is DFM the right entity to be doing that kind of work? How can we help that conversation forward? Because, um, really it's just completely overgrown. And, and therefore it's housing all kinds of activity that's, that's not conducive for community.
Yeah, uh, well, you know, uh, we do work closely with the Department of Parks and Recreation. You know, I know earlier, uh, you know, uh, talked about Kahaloo Pond. And if I'm not mistaken, there, there is a, uh, a CIP project. It takes about six years, uh, you know, as far as, uh, dredging of Kahaloo Pond. And, you know, that, that, that section of the haw bush, right, that you're talking about behind the regional park, I believe that's, you know, that's all Parks and Rec, uh, property. So that might be a, you know, if they, once they decide when and how they want to dredge, uh, I'm sure they're gonna clear that, uh, all of that haw bush and use that area as a, as somewhere to dry the material before we can actually haul it away.
Okay, and I've been around the block too many times.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's gonna take forever for it to decide what to do with the lagoon. The city is stuck with, you know, this is a federal, state, county project, the whole watershed work plan. And the city is stuck having to keep the lagoon dredged to a certain depth forever. And some of us have been talking about a whole different approach. Don't dredge it. Dig a hole, it's gonna fill in. Create a managed wetland because we need the filter that used to be there, right? The lowlands, the floodplains, whether they were active in Loi or whatever, um, they are essential filter for what's coming downstream. And, um, so assuming that that discussion about what to do about the lagoon and the sediment and all of that doesn't happen for quite a long time. And it's been, this is an ongoing conversation. Clearing the back nonetheless, the back area surrounding the lagoon is really, really important. And so somehow to get it out of parks' hands with respect to what they're capable of getting it into your folks' hands so that we can move ahead would be good. Is it a funding issue? How can we get a conversation going at a very high level?
You know, for DFM, it's not really a funding issue. It's more of, uh, the, the amount of work that we already have, uh, under our jurisdiction. You know, we're, we're trying to maintain, uh, what, over seventy streams, stream mounts, you know? So, uh, storm drains, you know, to prevent any flooding. You know, uh, what was predicted, the, the amount of rain that we're supposed to get this week? You know, our crews were out all over the island, uh, you know, monitoring, preparing to, you know, open stream mounts as well as, uh, you know, cleaning vegetation along stream. So, uh, it's, it's just a matter, it's just a matter of, uh, you know, uh,
Such an important discussion that we're not gonna have any resolution for tonight. So I'm gonna go.
One, one last real quick.
I'm gonna go to Uncle Art, Uncle John, because Uncle Art's been waiting. Uncle Art, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I got two questions I wanna. Who's monitoring the roundabout? Is there a study of how the roundabout is, is working out?
Okay, so to answer that, uh, you know, that's, that's, uh, that was a State Department of Transportation project. So I'm sure, uh, Director Ed Sniffin and his team, they're monitoring the, uh, the roundabout.
Okay. My second question is, Wahe Road and Cam Highway is a bus stop. And on weekends, the traffic goes all the way up to the shopping center. Especially because they got a special event going on. And they should be move, move the bus stop past Wahe. So the traffic, because what, what's going on is if a car wants to make a left turn to go up Wahe, the traffic hall is always blocked all the way down. So can somebody make a study on this? And get back to us?
Yeah, I'm sure, uh, you know, we can put this in, uh, in a notes and, uh, you know, get this, uh, distributed to, uh, the Department of Transportation Services. I know, uh, you know, uh, uh, you know, I haven't been in the city that long, but, uh, working with DTS, they, they do take, uh, months, maybe sometimes over a year for studies. You know, they want to make sure it's accurate and it's correct before, uh, they make any adjustments to the roads and, uh, I guess bus stops as well. Yeah.
Mahalo, Uncle Art. I just want to remind everybody in the room to go ahead and eat. If it's dinner time, go ahead and eat. Uncle Dan, your turn.
I had a quick comment. Thank you very much for being here in person. It means a great deal to our process. Second thing, at the beginning, next time, could you say a little bit about your department and the divisions? I'm always confused about DFM, uh, road maintenance, all the different things. You don't have to do it now. But next time, just what do you do and what's, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I can, I can answer that. And then, you know, I, I enjoy being in person, you know, I, I was at Pololo. Uh, I did show up, uh, majority of the time. I, I enjoy seeing people, talking to people and whatnot. So, you know, don't, don't be afraid to come up to me, uh, before or after, if I'm still here. But, uh, for the Department of Facility Maintenance, uh, not, you know, our Rose Division, you know, we, we pothole patching, uh, sidewalk repairs, uh, you know, uh, we, we do, uh, which, uh, median, uh, groundskeeping work, uh, stream maintenance. Uh, then we have public buildings and electrical maintenance. You know, that, we, we have over fifty-four thousand street lights that we maintain throughout the island of Oahu, uh, on all public roads. And then, uh, they also, we have a custodial staff, uh, a motor pool and, uh, security. And then we also have a repair and maintenance staff. Uh, they maintain all city buildings, uh, fire stations and, uh, police, uh, stations as well. And then we also have the automotive and equipment services. Uh, we repair over twenty-four hundred, uh, night duty vehicles as well as heavy equipment, uh, dump trucks, uh, and then we also do our own, uh, safety checks and whatnot of that and registration. And then we have, uh, Stormwater Quality, uh, who goes out, uh, they do investigations, uh, into anyone who calls in with a complaint, uh, illegal, uh, dumping of, uh, liquids into our, uh, drain, drain system, into our waterways. And they go out, they inspect, uh, new projects as far as like, uh, making sure all the proper BMPs have been installed for that project and, uh, they, they carry our, uh, National Pollutant Permit. Then PDS, yes. Yeah. But that's what we do. Just, just a little bit of everything. Yeah.
Mahalo for that. Uncle Ken, you have one last remark and I'm gonna move on to community for mayor's rep.
Yes, I'd like to support what John had said earlier about the lagoon and the, uh, uh, wetlands feeding into it. And the, the failure to use the wetlands for what they, uh, could possibly use. We, we have a lot of useful land that is not being used. Because I don't know if it's lack of vision or people aren't bringing it up. The, the Genki Balls is, is an idea that i- in the Ala Wai is finding fruit, uh, developing fruit. And we're hoping it's, there might be some positive results over here. The same idea is with.
Uncle Ken, I just, I just wanna get.
I just support what John is saying. And, and if we can do that, uh, that'd be great. Make useless, land is not being used, let's start using it.
Okay, I just want to get clarification that you mean that our land is not being used agriculturally and in preservation as we intend for it to be used, not for development. Is that correct?
As a filter.
As a filter. Okay.
Wait, where are we doing the development? I'm talking about wetlands.
I know, but I'm just getting clarification, just getting clarification for the record.
If you make some modifications for easy access and, and the cultivation of wetlands. I mean, the Hawaiians had it. They had their man-made wetlands. Uh, if we can do something similar, uh, with these wetlands, uh, it, it'll really do a good job of cleaning the water before it gets to the oceans. That's our problem. We have dirty water.
Yes, again, another excellent topic that we need resolution to, but we will not find it here tonight at the neighborhood board.
No, it's the same topic as what John was saying.
I know, I, I agree. I agree with you folks.
It's not an extra one.
But this is taking an exponential amount of time and we're not coming to resolution. So we're gonna move on now. Thank you so much, Mayor's Rep. I appreciate it. Moving on to Councilmember Esther Kiaina's office, and Councilmember is unfortunately unable to join us tonight. And so she has no updates. And then we're moving on to Councilmember Matt Wires' office. Chelsea, are you online with us tonight?
Everyone, I'm online. I am safely about to pull over so I can turn my camera on. I don't want to be rude to the board.
No, you're, you're fine. We just want you to drive safely. We don't care about seeing your face as much as we care about your life being safe. Do you want me to come back? Do you want me to come back to you?
No, I actually, this is actually perfect timing. I'm gonna, I'm in a safe spot. So I appreciate the thought and the sentiment here. Just try to get my timing okay. All righty, so thank you so much for having me. I do apologize for not being in person. But my name is Chelsea. I'm calling from Councilmember Matt Wires office. Did want to provide some updates here. Policy wise, resolution 25-234, strengthening the emergency response in rural communities. So in light of multiple recent emergencies, like the tsunami warning that forced many families to evacuate, Councilmember introduced 25-234 as a proactive measure to urge the city to install monitoring devices, including traffic cameras in coastal inundation zones where flooding and storm surges are a growing threat. Just before the, been news, this measure did pass at the last September full council. And just before I, before this measure came before the council, I was actually at Key Projects for the Child Resource Fair that was going on. And I had run into Joe and Joe had introduced me to Zina, who is a student who does a lot of work around, I don't want to misspeak for her, but I think she does a lot of work with flood studies and rural areas. And so we were, we were all talking story and I had encouraged them, you know, if, if you look at the policy to submit testimony and we had seen that. So mahalo if you are there in person, thank you for submitting the testimony and it did pass. There was another bill that I, or another resolution that I'd like to just highlight, which is resolution 25-185, developing a residential relocation assistance program. This one, as we work to expand affordable housing on Oahu, we also want to minimize any negative effects on the surrounding community. So Councilmember introduced 25-185 to support the creation of a residential relocation assistance program. So when new construction has potential to displace existing residents, the council just wants to ensure that they have the support that they need to thrive. And so that measure was also adopted at the last September full council meeting. I did want to also share, this is an important deadline for folks, for homeowners. September 30th is the big deadline. If you're a homeowner, you may know this already, but this one applies for real property tax exemptions, dedications, as well as credits. And so if you are a homeowner, just make sure that you follow up with the Department of Budget and Fiscal Services. There's a lot of great resources on their website, but that September 30th deadline is quickly approaching. And so we understand every time that we get past that deadline, we sometimes will get folks who contact our office, you know, saying that they missed it. And unfortunately, after that September 30th deadline, not much, not much that we can do on that part. And so just wanted to highlight that for, for the homeowners. One of the things that did come up that isn't on our newsletter, because this actually just happened on Tuesday of this week. So myself, I had joined HPD, DFM, DPR, we did an SPO, which is in layman's terms, kind of a homeless encampment, kind of clearing out at Kahaloo Regional Park. So I had joined them on Tuesday. It was my first time really exploring the grounds past the tree line. And so we had spoken with, with parks and in collaboration with DFM. HPD was there obviously too. And Jason Wool from parks was saying, you know, there has been a lot of requests to cut the tree line. Obviously, it's, it's so vast. I mean, I was kind of in shock with how much ground that was covered and how much was being cleaned up. And so from what I understand is from Kamimia Highway, the trees, all of the invasive trees from that first football goalposts to the second goalposts, they would like to begin the project before the end of this year of cutting down the invasives. It's gonna, it's gonna need a very big collaborative effort with the community. As you folks are very well aware, I'm sure, there's a lot of ground to cover and there's a lot of trees to cover. And so DUF, which is the Department of Urban Forestry, was not a part of that meeting, but it's going to require some of that heavy machinery to get that project done. And so we were sort of in the talks while we were there supporting DFM and HPD with the SPO. But just wanted to share with you folks because I know that, that park is of concern for the community with the houseless individuals and a lot of the dog, the vicious dogs back there as well. So that happened on Tuesday. More details to come and more details that I will be sharing, but Jason gave me the okay to share that, you know, they would like to start at least something before the end of the year, this year.
Mahalo, Chelsea. On that note, Uncle Rick did, Uncle Rick Towel did express his want to take that on a few months ago, and I believe Jason has been in touch with him for that.
Oh, great.
Uncle Rick Towel is willing to donate his time and heavy machinery to that cause and so too is my husband. So when you folks get that on your docket, just shoot us an email and we'll.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, it means a lot. And as you, as you know, this is not going to be a one weekend type of thing. It's going to be multiple weekends over many months. But I think what parks had, yeah, yeah. I think from what parks had said is, you know, depending on how, how hard we can hit the ground running here, you know, that kind of sets the pace for the following weekend. So I'm feeling pretty enthusiastic about it, but we'll definitely loop you in as soon as we get more information.
Mahalo. Board members in person, anything for Councilmember Wires office? Board members online, anything for Chelsea?
Kionin, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to say the same thing Jesse said before, right after I raised my hand. So if we find community members or, you know, like, like what Jesse said, I also am in that type of work, so I'm game. But if we do get that going to help you guys, we can get this moving, yeah? Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So like, I'd like to be kept in the loop too, Jesse. Let me know, we're game.
All right, I will let you know when it is go time. Other board members online for Councilmember Matt Wires office? Seeing none? Community in person for Councilmember Wires office? None? Community online for Councilmember Wires office? Uncle Donald, you got something?
Yes, Chair Donald Takamuro. Chelsea, thanks for your report. Last month at the August meeting, I brought up about the tsunami. What efforts has Councilmember Wire, I have people that I have friends that live down the country and the gridlock, what has he done to get feedback from the administration with Director of Department Emergency Management, Randy Collins and others, how they can rectify the problem with evacuation when we have a tsunami, hurricane or whatever? How's that going?
Yeah, I appreciate you. Part of, and I appreciate you, I did take that question back to the team. And I think part of the efforts had to do with the policy that was passed and introduced on behalf of councilmembers. So that one was in regard to the traffic cameras. And it, it helps in a way where the first step is understanding and assessing what the current situation is. Because from what we understand is between Koala Poco up across North Shore, I think there was only one traffic camera that was working. And so when we had found that information out, that's when we realized, you know, we need to have more monitoring devices. So that way we can understand in real time what the situation is and how to make a thoughtful decision from there. And so we appreciate your comments and your questions.
Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Donald. A quick one from Uncle John and then we'll move on.
Um, Chelsea, back to Kahaloo Regional Park. There are two spots. One, as you come up on the Kahuku side of the lagoon where the bank that is riprap rock and much steeper, and that was by design way back when there was Department of Public Works looking at this. And the reason for that is they're about the length of a canoe. And they were intended to be where we would have an articulated dock, two docks actually, one at the top of the lagoon and one on the Kahuku side of the lagoon. So as the clearing happens, just something to be aware of that that should be a goal, a destination is to clear those. And then we can consider the possibility of docks where a canoe could pull up to it. So anyway.
Appreciate that.
Mahalo, Uncle John. Thank you so much, Chelsea, for being with us. Moving on in our agenda to Board of Water Supply, Barry Usagawa. Barry, are you online with us? Okay, we'll circle back if he comes back or if he jumps on. Next is Governor Josh Green's office, Katie Lambert, Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Are you online with us, Katie? No, okay. And again, we'll circle back if they happen to join us later. Senator Brenton Awahui already passed through. Representative Kitagawa cannot be with us this evening, but she does send her regards and her appreciation to those that helped with her flu shot clinic in, I think it was Rep. Matayoshi that also assisted her with that. I think it was like the seventh year. So she just wanted to say thank you to all of those who showed up in community and all of those who helped. Moving on to Windward Community College Chancellor, Artist Eshenberg. Hi, Artist.
I came with props tonight. So, just so you know, the boots are a couple of years old. I didn't buy them just for this, not a poster. Anyway, I came, I have two things. One was unexpected and I've got one that just is. So the, for, did you say?
Yeah, no, if you could just get your mouth a little bit closer.
A little closer. Oh my gosh, that's super loud. Okay. On Saturday, September 20th, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., we are hosting a Punylo barbecue at the college. It's a free event for the community. It's going to be super fun. We have games, horseshoes, races, all sorts of things. We have a shootout going on. We have roping, actual, well, okay, the bulls aren't real, they're just heads on a haystack or something. But we will have bull roping and horse rides, petting zoo. It's going to be super fun. All of it is free for the, it's going to be to Hula Halau, music from Aleva and Hawaii Loa. It should be, it's going to be a great day. It's our first huge event that's open to everyone. There's only two things that are paid for, that cost money in it. One is a barbecue plate, which there's a QR code for pre-sales because it might run out. And he's probably only going to do the pre-sales plus a little bit. Barbecue plate, it's $20 because there's a bunch of fees, but it's huge Punylo sized portions. There's pulled pork, huli huli chicken, cornbread, baked beans, pickles, homemade pickles, corn cob et. And maybe one more thing on it too. Oh, sausage, that's the other thing that's on it. So huge portions. And then the other thing is there'll be a country market. All the proceeds are going to scholarships and advancement for the college, but mostly it's really just because we want our community on the campus having, oh, did I say mechanical bull? Yes, okay. So that's the one thing. And I've got stickers to hand out and I also have a few flyers. Sorry, I just came in from Maui and I didn't get to my office between then and now. So you got what was in the bottom of my purse, I'm sorry. Okay. The other thing to share happened today and I'm just sharing because these things are going through our whole community. So this morning it was announced that they're ending the Title III Native Hawaiian Serving Funds through the U.S. Department of Education. It's about $7 million of my annual budget. We're very successful at competing for Title III grants. We have a high percentage of Native Hawaiian students and use them. It's how we started a lot of things at our college. First year experience, supplemental instruction. We created a classroom for science that was accessible for wide wheelchairs, which we never had before. We renovated our Hawaiian studies. If you've been to the beautiful classrooms down there, that's Title III. Renovated our ag facility. It's how we began early college and incarcerated education. And today they ended everything. We had even put in a new grant, which we were told is no longer going to be offered. They rescinded, there's two legislative aspects. There's an A and an F. The one is easier to rescind because it's, oh my gosh, I'm forgetting the word, but it's like discretionary funds. I think that's what it's called discretionary funds. So those are effective immediately and they're working on how to end the other one, is what the letter said, in slightly more bureaucratic terms than that. And the only silver lining is if you have any money left in your grants, it looks like we'll have a year to spend them down if the grants were in a continuation period. But it's really devastating. I don't think the, I don't expect the neighborhood board to do anything about it, but just to be aware of all the things that are going on. And it's getting harder and harder to offer education, especially because at Windward, we are actually the lowest staffed community college in the UH system. And because of that, a lot of our functions really rely on grants. And that's how we do everything big and interesting and new. And then we hope for positions, which the neighborhood board has been really generous and helpful in helping to advocate for positions like our incarcerated, our mental health tech, and even our early college positions that were all given to us through the legislature. So anyway, it's just a new paradigm. I'm just trying to figure it out. And I've decided to go for a run tonight and not drink copious amounts of alcohol. Strike that from the record. Okay, thank you. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Mahalo, Artist. If you come up with anything on that run that we can help support you in and WCC in in recovering funds in some way, shape or form, please let us know. We'd be happy to write a resolution. Uncle Arthur.
I appreciate the support all the time.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm kind of concerned of the board. Twenty years ago, when I was the president, this room was always full, always had a lot of people. But I'm, when I asked the individual, is it possible for the college to make some banners for us so we can try to build up the membership? Like I said, it's so important that people get to know what's going on. I remember election this year, a lot of people didn't get the, the invite. One was my doctor who lives on Lulani, Dr. Parks. And she said, what's going on with the neighborhood board? And to me, we're missing people.
Okay, Uncle Art.
I have a couple of ideas.
Yes, so to ask, if we produced a flyer, could we just give it to you?
Yeah, if you had a design for the banner, we can print banners. I'm not sure if I can do it for free because it's state funding, right? But we would print them for as low a cost as we can. I have a media center, there's a limit on size. But what I was thinking was, maybe one of the demographics we're really missing is my college age students, both adult learners and traditional. And so maybe we could do something across the neighborhood boards of this area where we send it out to students like, hey, are you interested in knowing and having an impact on what's going on in your neighborhood? Here's the boards. We have Kani Ohe meets on our campus actually now, which is great. So.
So we have, we can get NCO to produce a banner and then maybe you could just check it for approval and we could kind of take the conversation further from there, if that's sufficient for everyone.
Yeah.
Uncle Art, and then we'll go Uncle John real quick.
The college does a great job. I've been the chairman for the Christmas parade. And without their help, the advertisement, we would need help. But the banners they put out and things like that is great. And actually, I want to thank you for an outstanding job. The biggest parade in the state of Hawaii.
We're proud to be a park. And the banners come out of my account, just so you know, they're not actually free. But I can't do that necessarily.
No, no, I, we understand.
Yeah, I try to be ethical and legal because I need my job. I got two kids in college now.
Yes. Uncle John.
Artist, just a real quick comment really is that in a time like this, I think the collaboration between and among organizations, nonprofits and so on around, because we are really an extension of the campus. And so there are different funding sources for those different parts of the campus. So just to encourage you on that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really thankful for Key's partnership too and Rainbow, yeah.
Uncle Art, you got something else? Can you make it quick? There's one more thing for Artist. Oh, no, okay. All right, any other board members online have anything for Artist? Community in person for Artist? Oh, Kionin, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, you know, like, like just touching base on what we're talking about right now and trying to get more of the community involved with the neighborhood board and even in return. and trying to get more of the community involved with the neighborhood board and even in return, try to get more of the community involved with the school and what they're lacking. Like, maybe we should consider, like, reaching out to the students, you know, like, for example, like, the barbecue, the Punyolo day you guys are about to have, having somebody there and just, you know, address the crowd and just be like, hey, you know, get members from all the community boards in our area and have them come up and talk and try to address the younger generations and stuff to, you know, consider getting actively involved in what's happening in their communities, you know? Get them back outside and.
We can totally do that, Kyone. The only problem with when board, our board has been invited to things, it's typically just myself that shows up. So if y'all want to actually show up to the events, then I will.
I would go with you, Jesse. Like Jesse, I would go with you for that, you know?
We could totally do that. You could have a booth if you want to.
Well, I definitely won't go to the Punyolo event because it's my birthday, so I'm not gonna go. I'm not gonna be here, but I would go if it wasn't. But Kyone, if you want to go, we can, we can get a booth.
Yeah, or just, you know, or just talk, like, like, just, just, you know, wherever you guys have your MC, just stay. We have a representative from the Kani Ohe Neighborhood Board, the Hualu Neighborhood Board, that just wants to talk to you guys for five minutes, you know, and just put it out there.
Yeah, we could put a booth so you're shaded from the sun too. And if you happen to come and you just want to walk on and say hello, if you find me, I'll be here. I'll have my better cowboy hat that day, actually, but same boots. Um, can, if you find me, I'll try and get you a second on the stage just to say hi. I can't promise that because I'm not in charge of entertainment, but I could try.
Yeah.
Roger that. Yeah, see, you know, just being proactive.
That sounds good. We're also, Artist, gonna be putting together committees at some point in time. Um, so if you have students that are interested, you can send them to come participate in our committees as well. But I'll email you on that. Thank you so much. Community online. Uncle Donald, you got something for Artist?
Yes, sure. Donald Sakamro, Kani Ohe Board 30. I heard so much. Chancellor, I look forward to you coming to our board meeting next week, but thank you. I always come to this meeting to listen to you when you come. And now I know that you're gonna have a special event, and then I can go with my other four board members, but other board members, thank you.
No, thank you very much. And we are considering disabilities access as well. We have special parking arranged for that and have tried. It's hard, we're on a hill. But we're trying to make sure that we're at accessible event as well.
Mahalo, Artist. We appreciate you.
Jesse, sorry. One more thing, Artist, one more time. Date and time this is going down?
9:20, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Roger that. Thank you.
Mahalo. Moving on in our agenda, Kani Ohe Bay Regional Council member Kyone Machado.
Hey, how's it going? So, our last meeting, we spoke about the things, the issues that have been brought up about the Heia Bull Harbor. Um, we also were talking about the Genki Ball project. Some of the newer things that came up were the consideration of getting a wider spectrum of testing throughout all of Kani Ohe Bay, not just the Kahalua area where we're doing the Genki Ball project, but further out throughout the bay from all the way from, you know, Ko'ola Point area down to the Kapu, you know, getting multiple testing done or seeing what we can do so that we can continue to try to find solutions for keeping the bay safe for everybody who uses it. We also touched base on the illegal activities happening on the sandbar, specifically illegal boat tours that go on, that cause all of that traffic on the street that we've all been talking about. Auntie Rocky is very, been very vocal about that at the Regional Bay Council meetings, as well as she always was here at the Kaulu Neighborhood Board meetings. Besides that, there's nothing new on top of that. We do have a meeting in two weeks, I believe. Um, it should be the first meeting of the new temporary committee that was put together to go through the Kani Ohe Bay master plan and to scan through and see what things have been taken care of, what things are, should be prioritized to be the next on the list, to be considered taken care of, and so on and so forth. I'm not, we didn't resolve whether or not they're going to have to make the meeting public, but I believe that if more than three of us that are on the Kani Ohe Regional Council are actually actively a part of this temporary committee, then it will be made public. So there should be updates coming, if that will be happening. And that's all.
Mahalo. Board members in person, anything for Kyone? Uncle Art, you got something for your grandson? No? Yeah.
I want to make a motion for a 10-minute break.
A 10-minute, 10-minute break?
Yeah, because we've got members on the board that bring, bring in some food.
Okay, Uncle Art, yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll get, um, you know, if you guys gotta step away, go make plates. It's totally fine. We're casual. But I will, I, we're actually have a really short agenda, so we'll have plenty of time to eat here in a minute. But if you want to make a plate, you can go ahead already.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna deny your motion. Sorry, Uncle Art. But if you want to get up and go ahead, thank you.
Sorry, Grandpa, not laughing at you.
Board members online, anything for Member Machado?
Kyone, what's the date of the Kani Ohe Bay Regional Council meeting?
I believe it's the, oh, I gotta check my email, but it's the 25th.
Can you text me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll hit you up, Uncle John. I'll hit you up tomorrow.
Yeah, I think it's the 16th. I think it's next week.
Oh, it is next week Tuesday. Okay, I, it was, it might, it was because we couldn't decide in the last meeting whether it's the 25th or the 16th, I believe. Okay, 16th. Thank you, Christie.
Thank you. Okay, so for clarification, Kani Ohe Bay Regional Council meets September 16th. Community in person, anything for Member Machado? Community online, anything for Kani Ohe Bay Regional Council, also Member Machado? Seeing none. Mahalo, Kyone. Moving on to U.S. Congress Representative Jill Tokuda's office. Do we have anybody for Rep. Tokuda's office online? Seeing none. If they join us later, we can circle back.
Jesse, can we send a letter to them asking them to attend because they haven't?
So I think it's only been about like two meetings that they haven't attended because they were sending it, they were sending a rep, and they did send us an email update, I believe, last time. But I will, I will follow up with Chair, and we can send out a request. Thank you, John. Moving on to Kani Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Auntie Christie.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board and community. I have several things, actually. Um, so the month of August has been very busy. Obviously, you know, remember, we had the airshow, and we were able to come shortly after that. So again, thank you for your patience with all of the noise. Also, during the month of August and September, during congressional recesses, we actually get a quite number of visits from Congress to the Marine Corps Base. And not only to MCBH, but also while they're here, they'll do a complete tour of all the installations. Um, and we did have Jill Tokuda and her staff come on the 19th of August. Um, and they're, they're focused, they are always specific when they're requesting topics that they want to discuss with the leadership. Um, and you'll be happy to know that the water reclamation is always on the forefront of everybody, including Congressman Case's office, who also came out. Um, Tim Nelson led that effort, and he visited the Nupia Pond on his final location. And one of the things that he shared with the leadership and staff was that unless the community is involved in this, um, healing of theaina, really, is exactly what he said, which totally blew my mind. I hugged him and I said, thank you so much for sharing that from your level and from, from the staff that he brought out. So when they come, they come with other representatives from other states or congressmen from other states to, to look at the installation. But it has been a very busy summer. Uh, but I wanted to follow up on a couple of questions that you folks had raised, um, last month. And then one of them was regarding the, um, the air traffic tower. So, uh, Gunny Sergeant Joseph Kim is the man who is in charge of all of that. And I have him on text message, and I'm able to call him at the tip of a, just quick click, if I have any questions or concerns. So you guys could know that you can reach out and we'll be able to get in contact. So he explained, um, this tower and this airfield is considered a Class D airspace. And anytime there is any air traffic in the area, they speak directly to the tower that is there. The airfield is closed typically on Saturdays and Sundays, unless there is training that is, um, you know, planned. But that is very rare because even though units request, many times it is denied because they want to be good neighbors. And that is a commitment that they've made to, to say, enough with the air noise on the weekends. However, there are occasions when it's, it's necessary because they do need to meet certain requirements. And in a nutshell, it's to keep them safe so that they know what they're doing when they're in the air. So when they're not open and there is air traffic in the air, they do speak to the tower in Honolulu. And this is all through the FAA, obviously. But if there's any other further detail that you want, I can definitely connect you with Gunny Kim, and we can answer any questions specifically. So the drones that MCBH have are long-ranging, and their purpose is to surveillance long-term. If there's anything small, I would be very interested to even inquire whether that's coming from a military installation. Um, but on top of that, I do have additional information that I wanted to share with you guys to put out. Um, and we are updating this. So I said, no, I need something today. Give me something now. So this is a QR code that you can quickly click to get to the form to submit any concerns. It says noise concerns, but even if you have concerns about anything flying over, then you can put in all of the information. So I have a few of these here. I'll also email you. So if any other members are interested in getting this QR code, then you'll be able to, um, send that to them in an email.
Auntie Christie, can I post, can I post that up on social media for community? Thank you.
Yes, because it is a, it is a public, um, it'll be even on our website. So it's already, uh, moving forward to being public. They're, they're updating our website currently.
Kidoki. Board members in person, anything for Auntie Christie? Ron, go ahead.
I've got two questions. Um, one, um, keep hearing or reading about, um, water usage on the Marine Corps Base. And if it is true that they're one of the worst, uh, you know, of using the water and stuff like that. The other one is, um, are you guys still using the crater to, um, dump trash and everything else?
The Ulapau Crater is where the range is. There is a landfill there.
Yes, I know about that.
Yeah, that landfill is only for base use. Housing is contracted. And so there, Opala, is taken to, um, the same landfill that we all use. So the landfill there, it's small, and it's only for base, like our offices or things like that. And it's heavily monitored. So anytime that they're going to put anything in that area, it has to be tested first. So we had some sand at the marina, um, many years ago. And before we took it to the landfill there, it needed to be tested beforehand. And about the water. Um, so I did ask our, um, our engineer, who by the way, is a, is, um, born and raised in Kahalua and the Castle grad. He's our S-4 director. He's, he's come, Lance Lee. I said, um, can you give me some updates? And so he, he wanted to share that the, um, EA is completed and they're moving forward. Funding for the reclamation, um, is moving forward. Everything is on track. And again, every one of our congressional delegates who have come have requested information about that. And they want to make sure that it's getting funded and that it's moving forward. Um, so yes, it is on track. They are also looking at other ways that they can use the recycled, um, water. They have contracted, uh, to collect data and look at, um, what is going, going to be feasible and doable and allowable. Um, so more information to come.
Auntie Christie, in 2023, I believe it was 11.1 million gallons a month that MCBH was using. Do we know if we're still in that ballpark of potable water?
So this is what he shared with me. Um, he wanted to say that, that the article that the Sierra Club put out about the 11 millions was, was incorrect. Um, the five-year average is less than 5 million a month. So over a five-year period, it was, um, less than 5 million gallons per month. Um, yes, that's the information I have so far. And if there's any further detail, then, you know, we can definitely get it.
Okay, Uncle Dan.
Would you ask him how much of the potable water of that 5 million gallons is going on the golf course? How much is going for residents? What I understand is there's more drinkable potable water going on the golf course than for the residents. Could you verify in numbers of gallons, not to the penny, but just generally, how much of the potable water of that 5 million is going on to golf courses?
Yes.
Mahalo. Um, sorry, Auntie Christie, I just want to double-check because my info is not only from the Sierra Club, but from a meeting that we had, um, at MCBH in 2023. It's 11.1 million gallons total for MCBH, but 5 million for the golf course? Does that, is it 5 million for the golf course or 5 million total for MCBH as a five-year total?
I'm understanding what I was reading being for everything, not just for the golf course.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll double-check.
Okay, thank you.
Just, you know, double-check that back.
Sounds good.
We have this on our agenda next, yeah. And we don't really need to go, I mean, I think we just need to know a hell of a lot more than we do right now.
Yes.
Because, um, our water resources are precious. I was thinking about this, thinking, there are plenty of golf courses around. Why do they need their own golf course? I mean, you know, you've got Ko'ola, you've got Bali, you've got Bayview, they can go do the mini putt, whatever. But it's a luxury. It's a luxury. Whereas the water is absolutely essential to what we're doing. Um, you know, Kakoei, if it needs more water, coming down through Heia, um, everywhere. And it's become even more critical because of what's happened in Red Hill. And, um, I just have to say, my distrust of the military's footprint has grown exponentially. You know, I mean, there's so much more that the military should be paying attention to environmentally than they have over many decades. Um, communicating, I don't know if Barry Usagawa is online, but we were talking about, um, the back of Heia, for example, Haiku. Um, you know, Ko'ala Foundation wants to do some restoration back there. Um, I started to ask, well, what's, what's in the ground there? What should we be concerned about? Should it or shouldn't it be considered a formerly used defense site? Same like the back of Wahe'a. Wahe'a, the back of Wahe'a is now a formerly used defense site because of what's been, what's in the ground and so on. So just start looking at the military's footprint, looking at the pressure that's being put on our state, um, by the federal government as far as what the military, uh, can or can't do here in Hawaii. Um, a lot of pressure being put on us. Their leases are all up in 2029. Um, you know, a lot of that just comes to mind. You know, I appreciate, you know, keeping the world safe. I don't think they are keeping the world safe, to tell you the truth, right now. I'm not too happy with what they're doing out there in the world, so. But this water issue really comes close to home. Um, Ron, Ron raised the issue about where, you know, where landfills are and so on. What's in the ground there that's leaching out into places like Kani Ohe Bay? You know, what's being put down on the golf course should be a huge concern of ours. You know, are they putting material down there that's got lead in it? Who knows, you know, so. Yeah, sorry, Christie, you got a tough job. But I think we need to be paying regular attention to what's going on with Marine Corps Base Hawaii and their use of resources. Thanks.
I think we're all in agreement with Uncle John, and we can go more in-depth in this in board business. Um, but if anybody has any, yeah, I know, we don't, we don't need to because we're already here. But I guess the ask is gonna be that we just get a monthly water report on top of. So on top of MCBH's general report, yet specifically a water report.
And, and since you mentioned the, the, the person that's kind of the, the go-to person at MCBH is from this area. Bring them to the meeting. Get them to come to the meeting so we can speak directly and not have you with your head on the line. Yeah, thanks.
Mahalo, Uncle John. Any other board members in person for Auntie Christie? Board members online, Kyone?
Hey, how's it? Um, well, I was just gonna touch base on what Uncle John was saying too and just ask like, you know, if you're gonna get that water report, can we find out how much of the water they're using to water the golf course is actually like non-potable water versus potable water?
So there is a report about that. It's all potable water as, as is current. But so that's why they're working on their reclamation status, which we are in support of as a board because that means less potable water. But yeah, it's currently 100%.
Yeah, i- if, if you like, you know, that would be like one of the better solutions if you're not trying to lose the golf course, right? Is let's use non-potable water. They don't need drinking water to water their grass.
So there's a, there's a couple of facets there, um, although I agree that maybe they don't need their own golf course and all of those items, this, the caveat here is that DOH is the one that's kind of, you know, in the way or blocking them from getting their reclaimed water status because there's X amount of testing that needs to be done. I believe there's only two contractors do, that do that specific testing and it's taken them roughly two and a half years just to get to this point. So while we do need those reports, um, we also need to kind of lean on DOH to help us get it moving quicker.
Just if I may, so the Department of Health, the head of the Department of Health automatically sits on the State Commission on Water Resource Management for a reason, um, for lots of reasons. That would be one of them. They need to move faster than what we could probably put pressure through the Water Commission on DOH. Do your job, do your job. Also, Kaniue Bay is class AA waters. More so, they need to do their job with respect to, uh, environmental pressure on the bay. So, yeah, I mean, let's, let's ask the governor's rep to take this, to take this up as well and pay attention to it and, and, uh, ask the Water Commission to speak up. Don Chang heads the Water Commission.
So realistically, we've had this conversation in circles for the past, I don't know, four years. So if we as a board want to draft a resolution, if someone wants to go ahead and draft that resolution and propose it, I think it holds a little bit more weight.
So can we keep this on the agenda for the next meeting?
We can, we can. And if anybody wants to take that torch up to draft the resolution, um, then we can check it out next month. Any other board members online? Seeing none. Okay. Um, oh, and I just want to remind you all on that resolution, please do not send drafts to the board because that will violate the sunshine law. Draft it yourself, bring it down here and we can all read it together. Thank you so much. Community in person, anything for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? Community online, Uncle Donald, you got a quick one?
Yes, Chair Donald, Donald Sakamoto, former DOD employee of Marine Corps Services, uh, and since yet. Christie, I understand that the golf courses handled by Marine Corps Committee Service for the grounds, uh, groundkeeping, watering, fertilizer. Uh, have you been getting information from them how they've been doing, uh, their work on the golf course? And, uh, final thing, the, uh, uh, um, the, the Defense Department of Defense has changed their logo. Not called DOD anymore, it's called Department of War. So how's that affecting you folks for, uh, changing the name on your cat cards, uh, stationaries, uh, also signage?
We haven't had any, um, anything in writing come down as of yet.
Okay, I, I hope, hope not. A big change. Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Donald. Any other community members online for MCBH Hawaii? Seeing none. Thanks, Auntie Christie. Sorry, lots of questions. Uh, moving on to community topics. So this board members is not really for us. This is for our community. If you have anything else that is not on our agenda that you want to bring to the attention of the board and the community, anybody? Go ahead. Please come to the microphone if you have something.
Okay, um, I'm Kuupoli Fernandez. I live in Kahalua area. Um, I, uh, am here actually tonight to address, um, Bill 58, which was, um, created to, I guess, expedite the permitting process for solar, solar and photovoltaic. Um, I know that in years past, they were very behind in permitting for this, um, to happen for people that live. Uh, but in residential areas, it's, for residential homes, it's fine. But the Bill 58 has not, the mayor's office has not created guidelines for townhomes, condominiums and apartments, meaning any structures that are multi-unit homes. So apartment buildings that are two or more. And I, I happen to live in one of those areas in a townhome where since 2020, uh, there has not been any movement with regards to setting those guidelines to create, to open up, allowing people to, um, apply and then pass with the Department of Planning and Permitting to actually get solar on our units. Um, since 2020, we have had personally, Tropicana Village has had a few people. I got denied in October of 2023. You go through the whole process. When you get to Department of Planning and Permitting, they tell you you're denied. And then they just tell you there's no guidelines. So I would like to actually, tonight I'm asking to, um, address actually the mayor's office as to why the guidelines have not been met or have not been created to open up, um, 115,000 people live in townhomes or condominiums and not allowing them to, um, actually be able to have solar. Um, if you just look at the final, uh, the financial aspects, right? Um, with the wildfires and what's been happening, the natural disasters, our insurance has skyrocketed for us to be able to live in townhomes alone. The insurance has skyrocketed. Ours went from five to seven plus hundred dollars a month. Um, and that's just for our maintenance fees. We also have to abide by, um, this reserve study that's mandated by the state. It's required by the state for us to, I guess, have enough money in reserves for any type of, um, capital improvements on the property with the buildings, painting, roofing, things like that. And so with those two things, it's, and then on top of that, then increase in maintenance fees. And not, this is not just for Kahalua. This is the entire Oahu has this problem because nobody can get solar since 2020 in townhomes and apartments. And so initially I came here for that reason was to address the mayor's office to, uh, I guess, work on the guidelines, but I'd like to, I'd like to know when they plan on getting it done. And I'd like to know what the deadline, if there, if they could create a deadline that they could meet so that people can, can move. Cause right now, I actually am sickly. I have a, I had a heart transplant in 2017 and so I need to get, um, at some point I need to get AC, air conditioning. And in order to be able to do that, I can't afford to have an AC if I don't have solar. Besides the fact that we live in Hawaii and there's sun everywhere, every building should have solar. And we should be able to take advantage of the natural sun that we have here in Hawaii. So to deny people is almost like discriminating against all of townhomes and apartment buildings really because we are not able to, um, exercise that right to have solar. So the mayor's, um, representative is not here. Um, and I wish I'd probably had addressed it when he was speaking. Um, but I'd like to know when they're deciding on working on this, when the deadline will be. And I will be at every meeting to discuss this every single time until something's done to address that.
Mahalo Kuupoli. So it doesn't matter that the mayor's rep has already gone because this is for the record. They'll see it in the notes, but also this wouldn't necessarily be for mayor's office. It would actually be more for council member wires office because it would be a full council vote, um, and a committee vote prior to that. And we still have council member wires office. Okay. Yeah. Office liaison online. Chelsea, did you get that note by chance? Sorry, I'm not sure if you're driving.
I did, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm safe now. I, I'm taking notes, Bill 58. And then could, um, could you repeat your name again? In the beginning?
My name is Kuupoli Fernandez. K U U P O L I. Last name Fernandez with a Z. Yeah, no problem.
Mahalo, Chelsea, for getting that note. Sorry, Chelsea, did you have another question for Kuupoli?
I, I wanted to, um, just ask what's the best form of contact? That way, Latani, he, he, he is our chief of staff and our policy person. Um, can maybe follow up with some questions and then we can get into some steps here.
So Kuupoli is our newest board member in sub six and I will ask NCO to forward over her contact information to you folks.
Perfect. I could also grab it on the website. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chelsea. Yeah. So no worries. It got to who it needs to get to. Uncle John?
Can, this, this seems like a really good thing to put on our agenda for next week meeting, um, no matter what. Whether it's Bill 58, but I'm also curious, I mean, that's at the city level, right? Um, under DPP. Um, where is the state energy office on these kinds of issues? I mean, those are some of the questions that we gotta be asking. Um, that's, that comes out of the Department of Business, Economic Development and Tourism. So, I mean, I think a really important item for our agenda. Gosh, I'm thinking back to a conversation I had with Arnold Morgado when he was running for mayor or something or other. And he mentioned the same thing, that townhouses, like 20 years ago, that townhouses couldn't put PV on their, on their roofs. So, um, yeah, huge issue.
Uh, yes.
Solar water heating as well.
I'm in agreement and we can discuss more about how we're going to move forward with all of these things in the committees discussion because we do need to establish committees because we need to have things settled. We can't have every full conversation during a full board meeting and make a decision when people are just getting the information. So we'll come back to that. Yes, thank you. Community concerns. Anybody else? Dee, come up to the microphone.
Donna Coles, I was late today. Did we talk about Ha'ea State Park?
We did not. We were waiting for you. This is your time to shine, Donna Coles.
Yes. So I don't know who opens and closes the gate at Ha'ea State Park. Whoever is doing it is opening the lock and leaving the chain back on it and it looks like it's locked, um, all day long. So I have drawn, but drove, driven by, um, numerous times. And I've taken photos and I was instructed that I should be taking videos. But the last time was last week and there was three cars waiting outside. The gates were closed, chain was wrapped and I got out of my car, went over and the lock is unlocked. So whoever is opening the gates, like the city and county, I know they have subcontractors that open and close the gates. I don't know if that's the same for the state, but they're doing a very, very bad job. And if they can't open the gates when the parks opens at nine and they come at six o'clock in the morning and open it and leave it and look like it's locked, that's not fair. That's, and I've called DLNR on this and they're, oh no, the park is open. And I'm like, no, it's not. And then they gave me another number to call, which I did. And that gentleman did not have a clue as to what was going on. So DLNR is unaware of it. They think the park is open every day, but it's not.
So we've, we've expressed this to DLNR in the past when we had Don Chang, so I will follow up. Um, I will follow up with that. Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. Any other community members in person? Community members online, this is your time. Anything going on that you need us to know about or you need your other representatives to know about or you need the community at large to know about? Seeing none. Kyone, you got something?
No, I was just gonna tell Kuupoli right on for sharing that information that she did. I had no idea about that. But like, it's very important. It's a hot issue because all of these new developments that are gonna be coming up, you know, for housing developments that they're talking about, they're going to be either apartment style or town housing developments. And if they get solar, but these people who bought theirs privately don't get solar, that's not cool. You know, so right on for that and welcome to the board. And then what, uh, next lady Donna said, totally agree with you as well. I drive past there every day and I shake my head every time because I see that gate closed and it's a state park that was paid for by taxpayers and we should all be able to access it freely.
Mahalo, Member Masato. We are moving on in our agenda. Oh, Kalamai? Oh, hi Marie, you got something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask who's in charge of the park now since Kamainakere or Kamainakere Kids was, uh, removed from it?
Um, so it's a new, I believe it's a family. Um, they're originally from Punalu'u. Um, but they have only a conditional, a conditional, um, I don't want to say conditional use permit because that's not right, but it's something to that effect where they just have a short stewardship. Um, and then we'll be up for some sort of review, but I do not know their names in general. But that's, they're, I don't know that they're in charge of the park itself or if they're just in charge of the pavilion and the restrooms.
I would think state parks should be ones.
I'm sorry, what? What?
I would think state parks itself should be responsible for opening and closing that gate.
So there's a couple facets there because there's, I, I believe it's broken up into three different sections, that Ulumau area. So there might be some people in charge of some things and other people in charge of other things. But we'll follow up with DLNR on why the gates are continuing to not be open.
I know, I've noticed that too. It's kind of like a cut off your nose despite your face, but okay, mahalo.
Thanks, Marie. Anybody else for community topics slash residence community concerns? I realize that we kind of just mixed six and seven there, uh, but they're basically the same thing because we have no presentations today. Kuupoli?
So backing the front of, uh, actually the shopping center, Kola Shopping Center, when you leave on the back way, this is opposite of McDonald's down Huiva Street. Between the shopping center and Tropicana Village Haiku, which is where I live, there is a canal there that runs all the way from up top, all the way down and then goes into the city and county, fronting the road, which is right at parallel, that runs parallel to, um, Kahikili. So that area is widely overgrown and a lot of the trees are actually coming over our property and onto our buildings. And so we have, um, in all the years that, that I've lived there, city and county has always trimmed the trees within that, that fence, which is that canal. There's trees that grow up on top of the canal between the fence and the ground and it grows over. And this year, the city and county told us that that's not our responsibility. And we're gonna stop, um, cutting the trees in areas that we've been doing all these years and kind of it's not our responsibility. So we said, okay, well then you guys have to determine who owns this property. And they're saying that we need to get it surveyed. So that's big money for our association too because it goes all the way up. So my thing is I'd like to address city and county needs to actually find out who owns that property, whether it's the shopping center who needs to manage that entire canal, which is to maintain and cut the trees. Or if it's us, I, for all I know, it's never been us. We have a fence line there in the back. So anyways, that's, that's another concern for that area. It's very.
Chelsea, did you get that note as well?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna have to ask again for the street name. And I, I do know that Warren from DFM, who was just here earlier in the meeting, he, he's probably the one and, and actually the department to follow up on that. So I could also just pass that, the note to, to Warren.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uncle John, you have something for that note?
I, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, when you try to come out of Huiva going towards Waiohuli, you cannot see the cars coming because of that foliage. And, and, uh, so this also is an interface between the Department of Transportation Services, um, which, cause I think Huiva is probably city and Kahikili is state, of course. And so we need that kind of, uh, conversation because it's a very dangerous intersection and people trying to get out and go to the right. There really should be a turn lane there. There's a channel there. Cap the channel, create a turn lane. So that, yeah, this is a, a more complicated issue.
Yeah, that's a more complicated issue than we're gonna solve tonight. But yeah, at least we got it going. Chelsea's got the note and moving on. I am not the agenda maker. That is up to chair, but I will give him a note.
I am also willing to spearhead the issue that I brought up, which is about solar.
We appreciate that.
So if we need to create a subcommittee, I would be willing to run that.
We appreciate that, Chair, and I appreciate anybody that would like to sign up for a committee. Sorry, um, Chelsea is asking for a street name. Kuupoli, could you give her the street name real quick?
It is the backside of Huiva Street, so it's not the McDonald's side. It's on the other side. Huiva loops all the way around and comes back down. And this is the one that crosses over to the school, to Ha'ea Elementary or Ahuimano.
But this is, so this is still on, but it's still on the Times supermarket side of Kahikili, not on the Ahuimano Elementary side.
No, it is the Huiva, it is a Huiva, so this.
Well, because Ahuiva runs up to Ahuimano Elementary too. So is it in that back part of the loop or is it?
It's, it's the shopping center side.
Shopping centers, right. Thank you very much.
And if you go up the street and there's like three or four driveways, then you hit the back. And if you go up the street and there's like three or four driveways, then you hit the back way to get into the shopping center. That is where the canal is. When you get there and then there's the, uh, I guess the renal failure, the dialysis place right there. That is the canal. That's where the canal is, is is the back of the old theaters, which used to be Long's or something like that used to be there. Um, but it's it runs along that whole stretch and it goes up past Tohui Manu Gardens as well.
I can definitely follow up with you offline if you don't mind, and then maybe maybe via email having and down is usually super nice for me. That way there's no way I could mess it up. No problem. From the maps as well. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Community members. Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Sergeant. Sorry, didn't see you. Go ahead.
Yes, sorry. So, um, I had brought this up to, um, Brenton Awaz's office, um, several months ago. Because the kids that cross the the street, they're going to Ahuimano School. A lot of times there's cars that are trying to make that yellow light and the kids are starting to cross and they almost get hit. Also, I looked at the stats in that particular intersection and there's an unusually high number of accidents at that intersection. So like, um, Uncle John was talking about the the visibility is severely hindered by the vegetation that's going through the fence. And so when I brought it up to Brenton, he actually like, it was like two days later, they went and they cut the trees, which was awesome. Unfortunately, the trees need to be cut um at the base because you can't see through the fence, but they just kind of topped above the fence, which helped a little bit, but um, I think Brenton Awaz's office called, uh, the State DOT or something. I don't know who did it, but they did it like within two days after we called.
Okay, mahalo, Sergeant. So we'll follow up on that, um, and figure out whose jurisdiction that actually is. Senator Awah will always try to help mitigate safety concerns, even if it's not his kuliana, but we will continue to follow up with all of the offices, city and state. Mahalo. Community members, not board members, in person, online, anything? Uncle Ken, you have a one minute quick note?
Uh, yeah, just it's a question. Uh, is the area of concern, does it include from that intersection towards the sewage pumping station? In essence, Kahikili Highway, uh, with the, there's a canal goes right along there and it's always been covered. And it created a lot of issues.
I know which one you're talking about, but that's not the one that Kuupoli is describing. She's describing the one that comes down.
That one runs parallel to Kahikili. I'm talking about the one that's running opposite of that that runs up the hill on Huiva Street.
And what about between there and McDonald's?
No.
That's fence there. There's not a problem there.
Actually, that canal is overgrown. I mean, that's not not the canal overgrown, but the fence. That's overgrown, going up towards McDonald's.
In agreement. Do we know whose fence that is?
You're taking a right to Kahalu and you look left, you cannot see who's coming down Kahikili.
All right. So we are going to follow up with city and state on establishing whose jurisdiction that is and asking them to come take care of their kuliana.
One one last thing on that. Okay.
Make it quick, Uncle Ken.
Ownership of the road, okay, which is road and sidewalk, there's also right of way. And the right of way is always much larger. So they say, oh, that's not ours. That's not ours when there's vegetation on it. But it is theirs because it's their right of way. Thank you.
Okay, I actually, that's a great note, Uncle Ken. I appreciate when you give us little gems like that. Thank you so much. One quick community announcement, since we're on the topic of the Ahuimano area, Ahuimano, uh, Kalamai, Ahuimano Elementary's fundraiser will be on Saturday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from nine AM to two PM. So if you want to support some of our Kiki and our community, please go out. They're gonna have some rides, games and food booths. Uncle Donald, go ahead. Uncle Donald?
Yeah, Chair, uh, just Sakamoto again. I have some people that live in Kahalu and they, uh, experience a sewage um, things were, uh, being, um, let go of the sewer plant and they, they, the city went to clean it up, but this has been happening in the news, so I hope they can rectify the problem over there so they don't have sewage relief terrible.
Mahalo, Uncle Donald. To my knowledge, it's been mitigated, but yes, we look for longer term solutions. Thank you for that. Any other community members online? Seeing none. Moving on in our agenda to Board Business, the discussion of the Kanihohe Marine Corps Base Hawaii Water Use and Request for Updates. Do we feel like we've covered this well enough in the Kanihohe Marine Corps Base? Report mahalo so much for moving on to the creation of the ad hoc seats to address long term, long term board vacancies, which we no longer need to tackle now that we have a representative in Sub District Six with only one vacancy.
And and ad hoc should be at large.
I love that so much. Again, not the agenda creator, so thank you so much. Appreciate the, um, the grammatical check. Yes. Moving on to creation of board committees and chairs. So Chair is not here with us tonight, but let's just, uh, have a quick discussion. Some things that Chair and I discussed, we'd like to see a committee for education. We'd like to see a committee for Hawaiian affairs. We'd like to potentially see a committee for, um, legislation that community would like to see. This is for committees. So for committees, Chair needs to assign the committees, but he is not here because he had car trouble tonight. Um, but in preliminary discussions, we had discussed the want or the need for a education committee. This is essentially something like getting the college on board and coming to neighborhood board and engaging the halal next door, the taekwondo people next door, all of those things, just getting people educated on what neighborhood board does. And inviting them to engage with us more frequently and fill up this room. Um, also, we talked about a committee for Hawaiian affairs, as is always a precedent for us. We also talked about a committee potentially for legislation. So when we're approaching like legislative session, instead of waiting until our legislators are already in session and asking them for things that are not gonna happen on a quick term dime because they already have all of their resolutions and all of their bills drafted prior to session starting. We could get together and draft proposals or things of that nature ahead of time, submit them ahead of time, um, either on behalf of a board or a community at large, however that may have you. And if you folks can think of any other committees, conservation, all those kinds of things, um, bring it up, but also be prepared to sit on said committees. We don't want to do any more than two board members per committee and we want to get our community involved and on these committees. So think about those things and when Chair comes back, Chair will designate those things. Do you guys have any other suggestions for committees that you feel are lacking?
Now would be a good time to get people involved is if you fill your committees with people that are not in this in this building.
Correct. Uncle John?
Gonna say what I always say, um, I've never really, I mean, we've seen some successful committees, but generally speaking, people don't have time for committees so much. I'm I'm a very strong proponent of committees of the whole. So if we stop our regular neighborhood board meeting and we convene as a committee of the whole, for example, on transportation or education or Hawaiian affairs. That way everybody's involved, but we can focus on those particular topics. Um, I do like the idea. Um, again, just making comments, I like the idea of a legislation committee, um, provided it's state, county, federal, and neighborhood board legislation. So we're paying attention to all of the layers of, uh, graphics.
I agree with all those points. Um, the problem is, is that we have a three hour time limit, right? We're always discussing the limit that we have with NCO. And unless we are going to be responsible for recording and publishing our own minutes and our own everything, and you all are gonna go ahead and go get your own WebEx links and all of those kinds of things. Um, we can't cut our meeting when we have full agendas and it's eight o'clock and we have a really short agenda and I'm still sitting here at eight o'clock talking to all of you fine people. So we need the committees because I need you guys to break out, get the resolutions together. So all we have to do is read it, say yea or nay, and move on.
So I'm very old school, um, going way back to the beginnings of our neighborhood board when we used to meet twice a month.
I love that. Is that something we can do? Is that something we have capabilities to still do? Because neighborhood board is over fifty years old at this point. So when it started is not really relevant to right now, Uncle John. Sorry.
I'm over fifty years old too, but, um, you know, it could be, it could be where you have, um, you know, even the daytime committee meetings. And and, uh, you know, people can attend if they want to or do or whatever. Anyway, just a thought, just a thought.
Yeah. So I sympathize, empathize as a mother of three with a medical child that everybody's busy. But if you want it done, then come get it done. And that's all I'm gonna say on that note. Can we meet more than once a month and be supported by NCO? Yes or no? Absolutely not. So think about your committees. Thank you so much. Moving on.
My house.
Uh, Uncle Ken? Uncle Ken? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I've I've been the de facto chair of the Transportation Committee, Transportation and Safety Committee, now the Infrastructure Committee. We still get things done. Okay. Two people at a time. And really, you know, just need to bang heads, uh, and think about stuff. But we can have good discussions, two people at a time. You pick an issue, we discuss with somebody else to fruition. And we're able to do stuff. We are not stagnant, the, uh, Infrastructure Committee. We do get things done. So.
So I appreciate that, Uncle Ken. And I know that you get things done, but since we're in a new board term with new board members, we actually don't have that committee as is current. That's a committee that we had in past terms, but we have zero committees right now and we've had zero.
That's why I called it, that's why I called it de facto.
I I understand. So I appreciate all of your efforts, but I need everybody else to pony up and get it done. Love you guys so much. Moving on. We are going to adopt a resolution opposing Waiea Road commercial vehicle parking. Uncle John, you want to go ahead with that?
I think it's a moot issue at this point. The business that was trying to pull that off is gone, so.
Okay, all right, excellent. So we don't need to tackle that guy anymore. And moving on to the approval of Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Second, um, all right, any opposition to the to the meeting minutes being approved as is? Seeing none. Donald is not a board member, so this is not relevant for board business. Uncle Donald, I'll get to you in a moment. We're just tackling our board business right now. Thank you so much. Okay. Uncle Donald, you got a quick one? We're moving on in the, um, in the agenda. You got a quick something for community?
Yeah, uh, yeah, Chair, you know, the, um, the minutes, uh, there was something that was missing my comments I made. Uh, after number eight, Hawaiian electric responsibilities. Uh, I mentioned about the sidewalks being overgrown and it should be AD assessability for those who are disabled and other people, if they can put in the record.
What is the edit, Uncle Donald? If you could just give me the exact language and I can have NCO adjust it?
Yeah, uh, I just saw a comment on the vegetation overgrown on sidewalks to make sure that it's AD assessable for persons with disability and others.
Okay, um, we'll add that in and I will have Secretary review the notes and we'll check on that note next meeting and we'll vote for that for the record next meeting. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, Mr. Lewis.
Moving on to sub district reports. Number one.
Just want to call attention to email that I think went to you.
Uh, I'll get, I'll get to that guy. Yeah.
That's it?
Sub district number two. Uncle Ron, anything? Uncle Rick, anything new? This would be maybe the time to kind of bring up the, uh, the, um,
You know, um, John and I wanted to bring up the, um, potential sale of that corner lot on Waiea and Kumemea Highway from Emma and, um, I really think it should be a parcel that should be acquired by DOT so that, um, that would give them, um, a basis for either doing another roundabout or solving the um, intersection problem down there. So whether we put that on a, the agenda or net for next meeting and get some DOT input, I think that'd be great.
So would you like me to formally invite DOT to our next meeting? Is that is that what you folks want? Or is this just the plain discussion?
It's the kind of issue that I think if a couple of us go sit down with DOT and talk this through and ask DTS to be there as well, because this, this, again, this is an intersection between city, Waiea Road and state, um, Kumemea Highway. And and it's all about, um, everything that influences that intersection needing that where where Rick's talking about, that's actually the drainage way going going across the Makai side. Um, and then there's also a drain on the other side. Um, you know, there there's a need to, and there's bus stops. Art's brought up the bus stop on the Makai side, bus stop on Amalka side, all of that needs to be rethunk. So getting DTS and DOT together. So I don't know.
So when you say a couple of us, you want a, you want a pig set up? So.
Rick and I can go.
You guys, you guys can go, but you can't go on behalf of the board without a pig. So we want to establish a pig for this? Or you guys just want to go as your own community members report back to us and then we have that discussion as board at large?
Sounds good. We can have a beer afterwards. Sounds good.
Okay, excellent. So we do not need. Um, okay.
We'll have one for you, Ken. No worries.
You're allowed to have two board members participate in any meeting. Okay, but you can't have three.
Yes, that's what I just said. Thank you.
So Rick, Rick and John should be able to participate in that meeting.
They can participate, but they cannot make decisions or negotiations on behalf of the board, which is what I just said.
I didn't, I don't think they're trying for that. They're making suggestions.
Yep, we're saying the same thing in different words.
That's all we can do is make suggestions.
Same thing, different words, Uncle Ken. Love you so much.
Causing trouble is very different from making decisions.
Yep, okay. Great. So so we're in the sunshine. Everybody is good with Uncle John and Uncle Rick going and having their own discussions and they will report back to us as a board and a community. Great. Love that. Okay.
Okay, one other thing for our district, and that is that, um, I understand from Uncle John, there was a troubling, um, I guess, uh, what was it? A funeral for the guy that, um, that that.
Raised that earlier.
Huh? Oh, you did already? So, and did you?
And HPD had a great response. They're looking at it. I think we're good.
Well, and then part of the problem too, I think, is that every other neighbor island has a raceway park. We used to have a raceway park at in Campbell Industrial Park. And I think that's a way for people to get some of this frustration, need for speed and stuff out of their systems, so.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, I have something for Sub District Two. I guess it's just me reporting. It's not necessarily for my sub. Quick email that I'm gonna read to you folks. Uh, aloha, Chairs and Vice Chairs. I'm Dr. Kyony Dudley, second Vice Chair of the Makakilo Kapole, Honoka Kai Halea Neighborhood Board and organizer of a joint neighborhood board meeting to be held in the Honouliuli Middle School Cafeteria in East Kapole on October twenty-second. The meeting will be a call to action for the various levels of our government to get moving now on preparing for hurricanes. As I've written you before, two hundred thousand will seek shelter in a category two, three, four, or five hurricane. But we don't have a single shelter on Oahu that can stand up to those winds. There's no place for any of us to go. We were so lucky that hurricane could go past us by, but it has been a big help in making people aware of the problem. The meeting will be widely publicized and will be shown live on TV and on WebEx. It will bring together experts to tell us all about hurricanes and to tell us the current situation for the area of responsibility and what needs to be done. We will have numerous people in government tell us what their departments can do and what else they need. We expect the really powerful people in government to attend and possibly speak in person or on WebEx. We currently have seven neighborhood boards meeting together. The more boards we have, the more impressive and insistent our call to action will be, given your distance from the meeting. If you are interested in joining, it might be best to form a permitted action group, pig, to attend the vote. In order to participate, it is required that your board vote to join at a regular board meeting before October twenty-second, which we can easily do because we meet in October before this joint meeting. And have that stated in the minutes. We will be sending out a call to action resolution in the next week. We ask that your board vote to support it in the meeting before the joint meeting so that you can vote. Sorry, so that your vote can be stated at the joint meeting. Discussion of the call to action will be a major part of the meeting. There may be changes to the call to action and needed to revote at your regular meeting following October twenty-second. But we would like to have as many boards as possible vote for the call to action as it stands on October twenty-second and then possibly vote to allow additions to be voted on over the next month by various boards as their call to action. If you believe your board might be interested in our joint meeting, please let me know as soon as possible. Dr. Kyony Dudley, this is something that I find to be a high priority. I'm sure, uh, you know, our Kaker President Marie Samudio would also agree that this is probably a high priority. Um, do you folks want to create a pig or do you want to just wait until they give us their draft resolution and vote on it next month's meeting? Something you can think about. We actually don't have to decide now because we meet before their October twenty-second meeting, but if anybody has any discussion to this topic, we can kind of air it out right now. Yeah, it will be on the agenda. Yeah. Okay. All right. Sub district three, anything? Four?
Uh, nothing.
Four, Uncle Ken, nothing. Five.
I'm nothing.
Six? Nothing else? Okay, great. Moving on to announcements. The charter revisions of the city and county of Honolulu proposal submissions are due Friday, November seventh, twenty twenty-five. Proposals can be submitted to. Proposals can be submitted directly via our website at www.honolulusityconsoles.org backslash charter. And then there's a dash there. I'm not sure if that's supposed to be there. For feral pig trapping and removal services, please contact C-H-O-I-Z-E-N-O at hawaii.edu. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM at Key Project. Everybody better eat before we leave because I'm tired of taking leftovers home. Potluck next month. Hope to see you all there. We're adjourned at 8:12.